Good afternoon, everybody. I want to appreciate you being here. We will come to order and resume the meeting, which was recessed on January 5th. This is a continuation of council's regular January meeting, so there will be no additional public comment time invocation or pledge. Sally, this is for consideration of award of contracts for the first phase of the community house renovation project. Sally?
You'll recall that we recessed that meeting because we were in the process of taking bids for the beginning phase of the community house renovation and felt like the contractors needed additional time to not have that due over the holidays and we would get better bids. We received three bids and you have that bid tab sheet in your packet of information. And the bids were within $7,000 of each other, so they seemed to be fairly good bids. The lowest bidder, responsible bidder, is Wilkie Construction and you have that information before you. Couple of things. At the ti- and Patty Glazer is here from Glazer Architects who's been working with us on this. We've been in this now since back in 2013. A little bit about the history. When Jan first came to see me, which was in 2012, right? With the idea that the community house needed some upgrading and some renovation and that the pilot club wanted to take that on. We got started in that process and had a group of folks and a couple of you sat on that group and worked with some citizens and some folks from the pilot club and some other people in the community. And Patty and her crowd worked with us to see what could be done there, what should be done there. And we had a plan. And that plan, in its entirety, would take about a million and a half dollars to do everything that we had come up with that would be good at the community house. In this year's budget, last spring, when we were considering putting that together, you all committed to budgeting dollars to do what I label as infrastructure work and basically guts work at the community house, which is upgrading HVAC, adding HVAC into the kitchen is now a part of it, new electrical service, some plumbing improvements. There are quite a few things over there that currently today don't meet code and exist because they've been grandfathered in. Looking at different basement access for the folks there that have to bring in the food and the supplies and carry them up and down now, I said of what could be considered pretty dangerous steps, to be honest with you. Looking at a different way to do that, looking at more efficiency. At the time we looked at that project, Patty and the group helped us to come up with a phase for that. And we were looking at about $160,000 to do the work. We're looking at $80,000, $81,000 to do the design work and everything associated with that, to get it to bids and then to see us through the completion of those bids. So there's contract administration and all those things in that contract. In that process, in 2013, you allowed the staff to apply for a North Carolina Main Street grant. April of 2013, almost two years ago now, we were allowed to apply for $200,000 in that cycle. It was not until June of 2014 that the state was able to really award those grants. There was a lot going on. The General Assembly was taking back money and things were in limbo and everyone was told just to hold on, don't move forward. The end of that process, we found out at the end of June in 14, that we had been awarded And last fall, you executed agreements with some of the sub recipients of some of that money and it is just now starting to happen. In that process, we found out from the North Carolina Main Street folks that they would consider allowing us to use part of that dollar amount, the 175, up to $75,000, to upgrade the kitchen at the community house if we were willing to consider, going on all over the place now, is the idea of a community kitchen. Our business, my local bakery downtown, they are strapped for capacity. And so, talked with them, the North Carolina Main Street group decided that, yeah, that was a pretty decent thing and so we can enter into an agreement with them. They would use facilities at the community house to supplement their facilities and it would be considered a community kitchen. And you get credit for the jobs that they create and that sort of thing relative to it. So to that end, once we found out about that, we hired a kitchen designer and looked at what would you do with that kitchen if you had the opportunity to make it efficient? If you had the opportunity, basically, to move existing equipment around and make it more efficient, to get some new equipment that's needed? Also during that time, we were fortunate enough and we had two health department inspections, two that I know of, and one inspection by ASHA. And there are some things there in refrigeration and those kinds of things that have to be changed over a period of time. So you put all that together, you come up with a kitchen project, which was not a part of the original project, to redo the kitchen equipment and bring that into compliance. And that's what you're considering today. So we actually have two projects. And I'm gonna go through them separately, if that's okay, so we can maybe try to understand. Okay. So let's take the construction project and the base, you know, the base project's talking about infrastructure, not kitchen, okay? Although, once you start moving around kitchen equipment and you are restructuring your kitchen, okay, that has some effect on your architectural plans and what you're doing with these items. For instance, air conditioning in the kitchen, it does not exist today, it has never existed. And that was phased in like a third phase of this project because we're trying to raise the money to match the public money all along. Well, if you're redoing the kitchen and you get the opportunity to redo the equipment and you're doing the electrical upgrade of the building and all that, it just makes sense to do the air conditioning in the kitchen at this time. So that has been brought forward and is a part of this as well, along with several other things. Base bid from Wilkie, 312-936. We need a new water heater and that's a code issue. That was bid as an alternate to the bid, $6,800. So that brings you to 319-736. In working with Wilkie and looking at some things that we could negotiate on, we have a deduct we've agreed on of $6,446. We have an addition for some additional sound deadening because one of the major goals is quietness. It's very loud when you're having a meeting and you're trying to operate. As a matter of fact, the small room on the Cobb Room side that's toward what I call the back of the building, next to the kitchen, can hardly ever be used because you can't hear if you're conducting very much business in there. Additionally, while someone's having a meeting and all that's going on, let's say that the meal is over and their business is continuing or their celebration, whatever the case may be, the kitchen staff has to sit. Can't wash dishes, they can't clean up, they can't do anything, they just have to sit because the noise is such that the folks who are paying for the place and want to have a pleasant experience can't. So part of this is to accommodate those. So you add that $530 back in, you get $313,820. We budgeted $160 toward this part of the project, leaves us $153,820 short. In the fundraising efforts, and we have some of those folks in the room today, there have been three private donations that total $150,000. And those individuals have agreed that their contributions could go toward this part of the project. They're not earmarked for anything specific as a part of the overall project. That leaves you $3,820 short on this part. Now let's go to the kitchen. The kitchen equipment, the recommendation would be to consider purchasing that through a co-op, which is like a state contract government purchase that we are allowed to use. And that totals $148,068. There is a cost for removing, reworking and reinstalling the existing cooler there of $4,500. And we have to do that whether we upgrade the kitchen equipment or not. So that brings that to $152,568. With the grant funding of $75,000, and then we had a private donor who came forward and gave $15,000 specifically for the renovation in the kitchen. Separate and apart from the original project that the group had been working on, that leaves a $62,568 short currently in the kitchen. Totally $66,388. So, recap. Total project cost before you today, and there are two pieces to it. The city would be funded $2,226,388. And with the grant money and the donated money, we would be getting $240,000. That would be coming from private and public grant sources. The $85,000 in architectural fees, which again goes through this project and goes through contract administration and working with the GC and completing it, is $85,000 that is already spent. Then, so basically what we need is a budget amendment, $306,388. So my proposal for how you consider doing that if you want to move forward with everything at this time, we just collected $300,000 from the sale of the property on College Street to the Senior Deaf and Blind LLC. You could use those funds, appropriate $6,388 from fund balance, and that would be enough to complete the project. And then as the private donations are collected and the grant money is a reimbursement, then that money would come back in and reimburse $240,000 of the $300,000 from the sale of the property. So logistically, that's how that could work. Now, what can we answer? That's a lot of numbers. Hopefully, the little chart in your information is helpful. And we got all kinds of people here who can answer all kinds of questions.
Sally, John, go ahead.
Is it appropriate to do a motion first and then discuss?
Yep.
Well, I move that, just a second. I think the third one is the one that should be made first. Move to approve for fiscal year 2014, 2015 budget amendment in the amount of $306,388 to appropriate funds for the community house renovation and equipment purchase. Now we can discuss.
We only got a second.
I have a second.
Forrest, okay. Okay, discussion.
Sally, I had some questions and thank you for your answers for the council. It'd be question number eight. With all the upgrades and everything, it looks like we will have spent about $768,000 and this would get everything we needed. Is that correct? In Phase 1A?
In Phase? And I provided you, again, the sheet that Patty and Crowd had done for us when we realized that we weren't gonna have all the money raised upfront, right? So we're gonna have to look at phasing.
Right.
And there's actually three phases that the project was broken down into. So this would be Phase 1A and it also includes some things in 1B. For instance, the air conditioning in the kitchen and those kinds of things. So if you look at that breakdown, that has been pulled up into this contract. What this will get us, and I think that the amount really is not 768, I think something got counted twice in that, is 561. If you, if you will look at the answer in number seven.
Okay.
If we took both of these projects, and I'm including the kitchen upgrade in it, okay, that totals $466,388. $85,000 in architectural and design fees and that also got the courtyard designed and costed out so that we can use that information to go out and find a private donor for the courtyard renovations, hopefully. $2,300 has been paid to a kitchen designer because we need a professional help because none of us have that skill. And we've spent $7,755 to remove the asbestos. The old boiler still exists and is being removed as a part of this from the basement so that that space can be frayed, freed up so that they can put refrigeration and cooling down in that area. The other big part of this, and I think is worth mentioning, and you all speak up when I'm not doing the right thing or forgetting something I should say, part of this from the beginning is for a dumbwaiter. And if you go down into that building and you walk down in the basement and you see how we receive truck deliveries and food deliveries in the alley, basically, and how you have to traverse up, basically, you come up a ramp and you maneuver around and you go through two doors and then you have to take some stuff down the steps that could kill you as you go down them, or come up them, either way, and some stuff upstairs. Part of what, in the beginning, our group considered was a need for a dumbwaiter. And this is a dumbwaiter. When I think of that, right, I think of a box that you slide trays into and goes up and down, like a food elevator, for lack of a better description. This one, and this runs in the total project, this is in the range of almost $50,000. And this is one that, if you will, allows for entire carts with, how many trays?
Twelve.
Twelve. With 12 trays of prepared food that goes down to be stored in the refrigeration until it's cooked and that sort of thing. And the same thing for taking that out and bringing it back upstairs to cook it. Right now, they're taking that stuff up and down and around, one at a time. So if you will, it's a much larger dumbwaiter than what we had in mind in the beginning and more efficient for how the operation could work.
Can people get on that dumbwaiter?
No.
It's not for people.
It's not safe.
It's not for people. But basically, it's an elevator that has to meet all the requirements of an elevator for a kitchen commercial facility. And that is a part of this. So when I add all those up, is how I got to the 561-443. And I really think that's an accurate number if we do both of these, that is spent on this project, including the kitchen renovation.
So this is Phase 1A, Part A and Part B?
And part of Part B. And I guess, in essence, a little bit of Part C. It has several parts from 1B and 1C included in it.
But this will not do anything for the dining room itself?
No. Future consideration in what the remainder of the private fundraising that has already been raised and that is continuing to be solicited would be for, and I can give you kind of a list of those, is that okay? Obviously, the courtyard, that would be the new entrance into the facility. The Connolly Room, which is the room with the wooden floor, okay? We call it the pretty room. But it has some, some things that could use some updating and make it more of an attractive facility and actually more accommodating. There are some plans for that. Upgrading bathrooms and bringing those to code and adding some additional bathrooms, upgrading the lobby, then adding in an elevator, that would be for people. That would allow for a new back entrance, if you will, to be created in the alley where actually some of our citizens who have difficulty dropping off now. When you drop off people, you have to stop in the street. That's your choice, right? And someone has to get out and if they need help getting in, it's very difficult for them. So there would be a covered access that would lead to the elevator, as is planned today. And then you could ride the elevator up if you were going to the second floor. It also incorporates the space in the basement, currently not being used very efficiently. It's basically being used for junk and storage and creates some smaller meeting spaces with some bathroom facilities down there. And then the creation, if you will, in the lobby near the elevator would be a bridal green room, a room, we do quite a bit with weddings and things there. The bride could have that space to get dressed and do all of those things. Or it could be a green room, like if you were having a speaker or someone preparing before a different type of an event, not a wedding. I'm sure I left out, who knows what? That's...
I can have a couple more comments. The Connolly Room, part of the improvements are with...
Why don't...
I'm sorry.
State your name, if you would, and where you reside.
Patty Glazer with Glazer Architecture. And I just thought I'd elaborate on a couple of these items. In the Connolly Room, part of the improvements include acoustical panels, sound panels, because I know there's an issue there. And, let's see, the, wanted to mention that with the courtyard renovation, the handicap accessibility to the main floor is also improved. Part of that includes, you know, the proper slopes and all, which the current facility does not have. Let's see, also, the green room has its own little restroom adjacent to it, so if there's a bride or a speaker, you know, it's kind of a back of house kind of space before you make your big entree there. And some of these things that Sally mentioned, you know, some of the systems are outdated, even when the Cobb Room was built in, the Cobb Building was built in 1980. If you think about it, it's 35 years ago, so a lot of the systems are not only outdated, but the code, for example, none of the mechanical units have makeup air. And there's no backflow preventers on the water system, you know, it prevents contaminating the city's water supply. The handicap code is also changed and so none of the toilet facilities, the bathrooms, meet the current handicap code. And part of that Phase B is redoing those, it's more than redoing those, it's actually rearranging them so that you get better use of space in both the lobby and, you know, storage facilities and just access in general. Let's see, I guess you mentioned the people elevator. I wanted to mention that that short elevator, the dumbwaiter, you asked if people can ride it. Actually intentionally, they have just a four-foot opening. It starts from the floor and goes up four feet so you can roll a cart in there. But even the cab is only four feet tall. Intentionally, they don't want people to ride that. But part of that cost, that expensive cost of putting in that dumbwaiter, is that you also have to cut through the existing floor structure and reheader it off and then build a two-hour fire-rated shaft. So, you know, beside, and that's included in the numbers that Sally mentioned. But it's not just the machine, you know, there's power to it and that building that shaft and modifying the structure as well. One thing I'd like to emphasize, besides fixing some of these code issues, there should be some considerable savings in maintenance and in efficiency. You know, things that break down and things that the city has to go and repair quite often, you know, with this new project, especially if we get to, you know, do the rest of the phases, then that will help as far as manpower and, you know, funds spent on those types of things. The other thing is fire-rated doors, where there were supposed to be some fire-rated doors in between the kitchen and the Cobb Room, for whatever reason, you know, the drawings from 1980 showed them, they're not actually fire-rated. And that's really a life safety issue that really has to be done. So a lot of these, you know, but the building's in great shape, I have to say. It's, I don't think it's throwing, personally, I don't think it's throwing good many after bad. The building structurally is sound, you know, it's solid masonry walls, it's not really, nothing's rotted, you know, all of that kind of stuff. So all of these improvements should last a good while and bring it into code compliance and more efficiency. If there's any other questions, I'm glad to address those.
And the other thing that I neglected to say, also in your packet of information, you have a list of the equipment in the kitchen by item. It's pretty, it's about two pages long and it lists out the description of the item and the costs associated with that. Then to the very right-hand side of that list, we tried to identify out there for you the things that are relative to comments that we got in the health department and ASHA inspection. Now that's not to say that they say, okay, tomorrow you have to go out and spend every dollar of this and correct that tomorrow. But the expectation is, is that over a period of time, you're gonna come into client, into compliance with that if you want to get decent health ratings and safety ratings, which obviously we do. So out of the $148,000 that is related to new equipment in the kitchen and upgrading some of the existing equipment that is in there today, $81,000 of it, well, that includes moving the things, $77,000 of it deals with items that have been listed for consideration on our inspections. So ultimately, we're gonna be faced with doing something with all of that, whether we have a grant to pay for part of it or not.
I think that, what, had you just described that, things that we have to do sooner or later. And I can relate the same attitude toward the downstairs. As a very young person, not knowing any better, working at Economy Wholesale, I have delivered groceries in a case of six number 10 cans of green beans, carrying them down those steps, you're taking your, your life in your hands. And we had to do that as delivery folks. And not remembering that until, you know, the, this first committee did a little tour and you saw what's been there over 50 years. And you wonder, how did it, how were we able to not hurt someone? And you see that old boiler down there that hasn't been used for many, many years. And there are at least three electrical services that have been brought in there. And that's still hanging on the walls. And these are things that we have put Band-Aids on for many years. And I think we have an asset in the community house that it's hard to put a price tag on it. You know, I grew up here. I attended birthday parties as a young man. I took dancing lessons, believe it or not, up there as a 12-year-old. I went with my parents to Rotary Club Christmas parties and experienced JD Fitz dressed as Santa Claus. And, you know, the Morganton Community House is an asset that I think we have to protect. And I've seen up close the, the needs that are there and, but I also see the value of this asset. And I think spending the money and we have a good plan for this first phase plus, I can't see any reason why we should not go forward with this. Because we have first-class facilities in this city. Look at your surroundings right here. And I think those of us that have been able to work in the other city hall and then coming to this facility, it's a breath of fresh air. And it's what our staff deserves, it's what our citizens deserve. And I think our citizens deserve a first-class community house and I think we should move forward with this.
Here, we have a motion, we have a second.
Sally, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask one question.
Sure.
The, on the $306,388 that is, is probably, what is the likelihood that that's gonna come, come back in, into the capital reserve fund?
For the $240...
Donations and that, contributions and the grant money that comes back in, is it reasonable to expect that we're gonna, that the city's probably gonna get that, get those funds back?
I think it's very reasonable to anticipate, the $240, which is the total of that, because the 75 grant comes back in as soon as you spend it. I mean, basically, you have to spend it and then you file with the state to get reimbursed. So that should be a this year item that comes back. Uh, the fifteen thousand dollar donation, that individual pledged that over four years and has already made the first year's payment. And, and would do that over the next three years. The hundred and fifty thousand, uh, those are five-year pledges and already one or two years of those have been collected already. So, I mean, I think there's a high probability, I mean, obviously, with any kind of pledge. You know, you, you take a risk as you do a multi-year pledge on something like that. But I think that the probability is extremely high that it's going to come.
So the anticipated, the total anticipated, uh, uh, monies that we're anticipating to come back to the capital reserve fund is exactly how much?
Two hundred and forty thousand.
Two hundred and forty thousand. Uh, actually not.
The sixty-six three eighty would be coming out of city money.
Not three, uh, not three hundred and six thousand three hundred and eighty-eight, but.
Right, because the, the sources of those dollars are two. Um, basically, with the three hundred thousand dollars, I mean, the, the Senior Deaf and Blind Group wrote us a check for three hundred thousand dollars. So it's currently sitting in the general fund, okay? And, and we never did a budget amendment to receive that yet. Because we have to set that up and, and, well, we just closed late December. And we wanted to make sure we had a closing and all of those things be- before you approved a budget amendment for that. So we have, that cash is sitting there, so you don't need to appropriate fund balance for that. The three, the six thousand three eighty-eight would be out of our savings, if you will, because we don't have that sitting there. And then out of that total, two hundred and forty thousand dollars is gonna come back over time and then be reimbursed.
Well, that.
I feel pretty good about that.
Okay, that, that was a, that, that was a reduction in the funds as to what it was actually stated here. So we're only anticipating getting back two hundred and forty thousand as opposed to three hundred and six thousand three eighty-eight, right?
The three hundred and six is the additional dollars we need to do the project. But we never anticipated getting back more than the two forty, because our shortage in total is sixty-six three eighty-eight. We always understood that that is additional city taxpayer dollars that will go into the project. If you choose to move forward with both of these parts as presented.
Okay, I, I think too that, I think we all need to realize that. Uh, oftentimes, uh, uh, the city does things that, and, and the city oftentimes spends money. That helps our, our whole county, not only just the folks in the city. But we're, we're providing a, a, a great place for a lot of people to come and meet. Uh, to have banquets and to have birthday parties or, or, or whatever the use might be. And, uh, uh, I think it's very true that it's gonna be a state-of-the-art, art place. And I think, uh, eventually, uh, it'll be used in such a way that some of these funds will probably come back to us. It's what I would anticipate, no guarantees, but what I'd anticipate, I'm very much in favor of the project.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion second, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, got two more to do. Any particular order you want, Sally?
Either one, because if you did your budgetment, now you really need to award the contract.
Yeah, I move to award the contract to, uh, Wick Construction Company Incorporated. Uh, for not, not to exceed, uh, three hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars for the community house renovation project phase one A.
Second.
We have a motion second, discussion.
If I might, and, and maybe this would be better addressed by Sally, but that not to exceed is because there. Well, Sally, I think you can explain that.
Still working on deducts and, and, and additions and, 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 I mean, there's still some negotiations going on between the architects. The, the construction folks and, and tweaking some of the parts of it. So it won't be more than that, but it could actually be slightly less than that. But that takes days and, and it's just not complete.
Do the second.
Yes, I second. I second.
Yes.
Just, um, you know, we, we're basing this motion on a, a bid process. But I'd just like to speak up about the, the three contractors that, um, did bid on this pro-. And they're all first-quality contractors. I've, I've seen the work of all of them and been involved with Wilkie. Uh, and we can't go wrong with, uh, Wilkie, I don't think.
And all three contractors have done and continue to do work with the city routinely.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one more.
I move we award contract to TriMark Strategic Equipment for a hundred and forty-eight thousand sixty-eight dollars for kitchen equipment for the community house.
Second. Have a motion second, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Sally, anything from?
I, I, the, the only other thing that, that I will say is that, um. Oh, the business plan, yeah, you, you have before your, well, before I say that, um. Much, much, much gratitude to First United Methodist Church. And, and I think that deserves mentioning again. Because the, the, the trauma and the trouble with some of this, and, and, and obviously, there's trouble in how you pay for it. And, you know, it's always a challenge, and then logistically, this is not a small thing. Because when we first started looking at, at getting the plans together to even bid out this part. You know, Patty and them are like, well, you basically need to be shut down, you know, three to four months. That's a long time. And that's a long time for a facility that so many of our local groups are used to meeting in weekly. They're used to being there, they're used to it serving them, and, and that really is what the community house is all about. So, next door, First United Methodist Church, they have a kitchen facility, their daycare is currently not operational. So it's being used differently than it has in the past. And we have worked through, and you approved last fall, the contract for us to get to use their facilities. But I, I, it's worth mentioning how gracious and, and how they have come to the table in working this out. And allowing us the opportunity to continue to serve the people who are used to the community house serving them during a period of time when this is gonna happen. Um, there's, there's still, this week, as a matter of fact, we are moving. They are packing up all of their stuff and our stuff gets moved over, so we don't have any arguments over what happens to people's things. And whose responsibility is what. Um, there, there's quite a lot in, in that agreement, and it's gonna require a lot of communication and a lot of working together. But, um, they are committed to that and they have shown us that, and we are committed to that. Um, groups that are looking to have their meetings, they're all very worried about if they're gonna be able to have them in one-time functions. And the answer to that is yes. And the answer to that is we are open for business and we will continue to serve in that. Sharon wants me to mention the other thing that you have in front of your place today. Is the three-year business plan and the supporting documentation for that for the community house is done as a part of the grant application. And as, and as a part of us looking at how the community house operation is going to change. I will remind you that that is in a fully operational community house, okay? And, and that's what we intend to be, although when you're in someone else's facility, the reality is for two or three months. We may do a little less business than what we are accustomed to, depending on the types of functions that we can have. So, um, you have that information, and of course, we're happy to sit down and talk about any of that. And that stuff that each budget year will get tweaked as we look very shortly at the fifteen, sixteen budget.
Thanks to people that are here that work on the committee and have been working on it for weeks and weeks, and I appreciate your help. And, uh, look forward to more money coming in. You know, we need to raise more money. Okay, anything from the council? Meeting adjourned.